Okay, let's call meeting the order.
Why don't you just stay seated?
We'll lecture, we won't tell.
Take your hat off.
Can't let you leave this.
You bet.
Okay, I have had no comments right at this period, we may move it down.
Let's do roll call then.
Okay, roll call, Tim?
Here.
Sharon?
Here.
Thea, excused absence. Julie, I've got a question with the excused absence. Josh?
Here.
Anna? Dennis?
Here.
And Michelle will be here shortly. Approval of the agenda, maybe 2025, is there anything we need to add?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to add a couple things. First one would be town equipment.
Okay, let's put that under new business, about number one.
And I'd like to put in there some more ordinances.
Okay, ordinances, let's put that. Let's go number, under number five, in new business. And then under new business, number six.
Number seven.
Number seven, I would like to put a hearing, discuss a hearing. And under number five, building permits, I want to add Dale Brandon for a fence. And I've got some questions about the building permit that I'd like to add me, under there also, for replacement of the fence. So, is that all for amending the agenda? Okay, do I have motion to accept the agenda?
I make a motion to accept the agenda, with the changes that we made in there.
Okay, Tim, would you turn this recorder on or is it? And Judy, could I get you to do a few notes on meeting on motions? Okay, appreciate it. Okay, all those in favor of accepting the agenda, let's amend it.
I think we already did it before.
Did we?
There was no second.
I'll second it.
Okay, all those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Motion approved, approved minutes for April ninth, two thousand twenty-five minutes.
I'll go ahead and make motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, bills, any questions? If not, do I have motion to accept now?
Well, we didn't really look at those too clearly because Michelle not being here to show them to us. But I think that we need to get the bills paid because having to be behind is kind of embarrassing.
Yeah, let's go ahead and pay them, and if there's any questions about it, we'll go back to them and revisit them at that time. So, can I have motion to pay bills?
I'll give a motion to pay bills.
Do I have a second?
I have a second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Clerk Crasher report, Michelle.
Okay, so Michelle asked me to just read this to you if you hear a little bit later. In the accounts in the general, there's sixty-eight thousand, three hundred and seventy-eight dollars and forty-two cents. In the police, the available balance is forty-five thousand, one hundred and thirty-five and sixty-five cents. The community is thirty-five thousand, five hundred and sixty and fifty-four cents. Municipal court, nine thousand, one hundred and twenty and ninety-nine cents. And enterprise is thirty-nine thousand, eight hundred and forty-four and five cents.
Thank you, Sharon. Janet?
Hey, total collections from the court from April was forty-four thousand, two hundred and fifteen dollars. You can see how many citations we wrote, Josh is going to include that as part of his report. We've got court for May is two weeks from tomorrow on the twenty-third. There's no trial schedule, but I think there's a couple of call-ins set up. We, I submitted the award agreement for the Homeland Security grant, and I also submitted the financial report for the COPS grant.
Thank you, Janet. Maintenance, Tim, do you got anything to add on that?
Nope, everything's starting to flow into place. Water reel should be in Monday, we should be able to get that running so we can get the parts and everything watered and fertilized and all that good stuff. We started to mow it, we've got mowing we're going to do tomorrow, we've got a lot of weeding to do. We've got a lot of fixing to do on sewers, and we've got to do, there's a lot of things we've got to start doing, and basically we're putting it into full swing tomorrow.
Okay, joint hours, Dennis?
They're doing good, they're still getting the standards ready to go right some day.
Okay. Josh, what's your report?
Mr. Mayor, things are going good. We are noticing an uptick in traffic, if you haven't been able to tell. We're about, we have written about five times more speeding tickets this year than last year at this time, with only two officers instead of three. We're looking to be about twenty-twenty-three numbers, it's been busy so far. Today I made a point of asking everybody I pulled over, did you not see any of the signs? And they said, no, I didn't even realize I was in town, I didn't see any of the signs. So just be careful because they're not paying attention, most of them are looking at their phone GPS, trying to figure out where they are, most of them are lost, trying to make it to Yellowstone on time. So just be careful when you cross the road, when you're pulling out. Had a gentleman pass on a double line today, such in a hurry, so we took care of him. So just watch out because they're not paying attention where they are. Chief Newman is at K-9 recertification this week over in Jackson, he'll be back Sunday to work, so it's just me. And then, if you have dog tags, if you could put them on your dog's collar, it would help us in identifying the dog that is loose, because right now, with new people moving in town and such, there's a lot of dogs running around with no tags, and we're having a problem identifying them. So just help us in that aspect so they don't have to go to pound, and you don't have to pay pound fees. We can get them to you and just handle it there. That's all we got, just be careful, there's a lot of traffic coming through at very high speeds right now. At least twenty miles over the speed limit right now is some of our high ones, so just be careful.
Thank you, Josh. That's all, the reports, we'll move to town equipment.
All right, as we discussed, the council discussed two months ago, I believe we talked about a backhoe attachment for the tractor. And we put the numbers to that, and I'll tell you, we've got a lot of small backhoe work that's got to be done. We've got a bunch of septic tanks, it's got to be relitted, reformed, new filters put in, that's going to require backhoe, we've got a leak on, is that First Street on Howard's? Is that Second Street? First Street, Second Street. We've got a leak over there, we've got to take care of it. What I want the public to know is, this backhoe will be for small jobs, it won't be for digging major waterline leaks. You will need a track hole for that, and that's just understandable. But the way it figures out with everything that we've got to do this year, which, I can't remember his name, Buck, that lives over there where Rollins used to live, they had a backhoe in the day, and it's one of those little attachments that go in the back of a tractor, two hundred bucks an hour for that machine. I mean, it's nuts. So, you know, we figured the number of jobs that we've got to do, and I'm going to say it will pay for itself the first summer, but I would, and I don't want anybody to hold me to that because I'm going to extend that just for my personal protection to two years. And if it even takes two years to pay that off, guys, I mean, it's like Howard said at the last meeting, we can continue to use people like Rattlesnake and receive a box of chocolates at the end of the year for, you know, thirty, forty thousand dollars worth of work, and we can go ahead and get that attachment and do it ourselves. We've got the money to do it right now. So I'd like to bring it to the council to share some comments, or bring it to the table and ask the council what they think.
I think that it would pay for itself, even if it did take two years, it would pay for itself. My dad and my brother used to do a lot of backhoe work and stuff, so I'm kind of familiar with the costs and the things that it does, and I've watched backhoes, one that you're talking about, where my brother used to have one also. And I really think that we need to spend the money in here because it would pay for itself.
By the way, the cost on it is a hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars, if you pay on it or not. I'm just kidding.
I was just going to ask you a little bit about your backhoe.
We got a cost from tractor guys on it for nine thousand dollars. So, you know, we do four or five jobs with Rattlesnake, we're going to pay that off real quick, you know. Versus using Rattlesnake is what I'm trying to say.
And I would also like to add that if the town has any small, small jobs that you need a tractor to move some dirt or do this or that, you know, we've got that tractor to help keep the town cleaned up. Don't hesitate to ask, and we'll come up with something, some way that we can accommodate everybody. If it's a fifteen-dollar charge for fuel for a little job, then, you know, that's what we'll do. If it's, if it's just going to push a little dirt, then we'll, Talos will run over and do it. So it's just something that we can use that for as soon as we've got it.
Well, and Mr. Mayor, if I can add to that, since we've got a pretty good drought tonight, anybody needs a garden till, anybody, you know, we're here to help the public. You know, if we get that backhoe attachment, and somebody's got a small waterline leak that needs to be dug up, or you've got from here to the window or something to put a waterline in, you know, call us, that's what we're here for, call Howard or I. And of course, we would have to, one of us would have to operate the machine, but, you know, we'll help anybody else that needs any help in town. So, it's like I hear we've got a fence going in at your place. You know, if you need post holes dug, let us know, we'll put a post hole attachment on there and dig you some holes. So, anyway, that's all I have, just so the public knows that we're here for them.
Okay, on the backhoe attachment, do I have a motion to go ahead and purchase it?
I'll make a motion to go ahead and purchase it.
Do I have a second?
You got it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Chicken application, Thea. I say she's not here, so we'll hold that up and go next meeting.
Paige, is on there? Yes.
And the next one would be Paige?
Yes, sir. Hi.
Aye.
I am just getting, I want to get eight chickens. No roosters, just eight chickens, that's it.
I see no problem with it. We'll give you a list on our ordinance that you got to follow. It hasn't been followed, so we're going to stick pretty close to it this time. And it's not that much, it's, in fact, it's more to help you, you know, keep the pen clean than what I'm sure you probably will be in a race around animals.
Yes, sir.
So, I'm going to get you a list of stuff that needs done, when did you want to get the chickens?
Not until like the middle of summer.
So let me, let me have Michelle get you a list of the stuff that needs to be done.
Okay.
And upon you get that completed, you know, we can, we can go ahead and do it, or we can do it tonight with the stipulation that everything is done, and we inspect it, and then you can go ahead and get it. But I'm sure you probably will have no problem doing it, it's just following rules. So, so do we want to approve that tonight, or do we? I don't know, I would think we could go ahead and approve it.
I would say let's agree tonight with the stipulations, as you said, that things are done the way the ordinance reads and prior to getting the chickens. Yeah, I've got no problem with our getting eight chickens.
I don't have a problem with that either, and I just would like to say that I do have, it's called Town Matters, my own code of ordinances. This was given to me by an anonymous person, and what was said was, several clerks before my time had given it to them, and they wanted to trust me with this stuff. And in this, it does say that these ordinances are codified. And it does say about the chickens, it says that every year you must come and apply for to have your chickens and stuff, because then that way, everybody knows that you're doing the things that you are supposed to. And the maximum amount of chickens is determined by the governing body, which, if I remember correctly, the last council said, what was it, eight or twelve chickens?
It was thirteen.
Was it thirteen?
Yeah, because Barbara said that when Ken applied for that permit, so thirteen was what, they said, yes.
So I think that we should stick with no more than that, because then you get a whole flock of them everywhere, then that becomes a problem.
Yeah, I think, I think what the last council done was good, thirteen chickens and onions is fine.
So I don't have a problem with Paige having chickens and getting everything set up.
So do we have to get another building permit for a fence? Because that's what's, we're waiting for that RV to be moved, and then we're going to level out and then build a fence? But do we have to get a?
Let's go through that right now, there was an existing fence there. I got my name down for a fence, but before we do it, there is three fence permits. It used to be if you were replacing a fence, you didn't need to get a building permit. You're just replacing something old and the crap that was something nice and new. And if, if the council wants to charge for building permits for replacing the fence, we can, or we can, if you're replacing a fence, just come and let us know, and you won't have to have the permit.
But the back, did it have, I don't know if the back ever had one?
Yeah, I think that. I think it did one time, it was there some years ago.
And back there, it doesn't matter how high it is, or it's just in the front that has to be four foot?
The, I think the back where you have chickens, it's supposed to be what, six foot?
I was going to say, because they're doing a privacy fence, actually.
And in the front, you know, I don't know that we've ever put a regulation on how high.
And this stuff that doesn't say how high, it just says it has to be located forty-eight inches set back from the curb line.
So, you know, and I would hope anybody that was putting one in, you know, it would probably look better forty-eight inches, fifty-two inches, something like that. But that's, that's kind of the discretion that the people putting it in.
And when the fence is over thirty inches in height, then you do have to come in and get a permit from the town hall for the ordinance.
Also, so that, that is there, so. But at one time, we were doing it where if you were replacing, you didn't have to get one. What we need to do right now is, should we leave that in place since we've been doing it? Or do we want to get, make them get permits? And I can't say anything, I have no problem with paying the twenty-five dollars if that's what everybody wants.
Can you combine that, like with the chicken and the fence?
Yes, yeah.
So like, and I, she amends it and says, oh, and the fence we could do.
Because you got a year for whatever you put on that permit, you've got a year from the time it's approved to do whatever's on that.
So, if you don't plan on building a garage, but it's a thought, put it on. Doesn't mean you have to, it's just.
Right, so then we could just add that one to you. Can I?
Yes.
I don't see no problem if they're replacing it, because it was there to begin with. But if it's a new fence, and it doesn't have to be a large amount, but just enough so that the town knows what you're doing to keep track of some of this, just so it don't get carried, you know, so you know what's going on, you know what I mean? And I think you should put a limit on how high they should be for anybody else coming in, that they all are the same, like six foot?
In the back or the front?
Yeah, in the, like on your privacy fence in the, you know, in the back.
Right.
But I think the limit on the front should be like every other town, which is, is, what'd you say, if it's over thirty?
Yeah, before any fence or walls over thirty inches in height, you have to come get a permit. And I don't personally think that we need to charge for a permit for the fence, they just need to come and say, and you know, have it in writing that they're doing a fence. That way we know what is being built everywhere and stuff, so you don't all of a sudden it's like, oh, where did that come from? Oh, my gosh, where did that building appear from?
Yeah, I don't, I don't think that we want to see six-foot fences in the front yard.
No, I'm not saying in the back. We're just talking about back, we were talking about kind of eight foot in the back.
Yeah.
Now, if, if you give the Wardland fences in front, they won't let you do it because they're afraid it's going to block somebody's fishing from a kid running out. But a lot of towns will, I don't, I would just send half the fence keeping the kid in than half the fence.
I mean, she's got two, three, four-year-olds, I mean, that's scary.
So, you know, I have no problem with, just come to the town and ask permission to put a fence up, and we'll stamp it and pitch fence up.
But I do believe that, you know, and I think it's in that ordinance, I'd have to read it again, but like, let's use one over here on, by Howard's place, there's a fence going around that corner. That fence is really illegal because it blinds both ways coming around that corner. So anywhere we've got corners like that, we've got to make sure that we're staying within the limits of forty-two inches, because otherwise, we're going to be putting blind spots on that corner like there is over there by Howard's.
Well, they talked about putting a chain link fence in the front.
Yeah, yeah.
And then in the back is the privacy fence.
So I would say that, you know, we need to, I would like to see a limit, you know, on the, on the front yard fences of being no more than forty-two inches.
We can do that, and if, if there's special circumstances, we can adjust it. Would forty-two inches be?
Oh, yeah, in the front, yeah, it's just mainly, you know, protect the kids and stuff.
Okay, so, do we, we probably need a motion that, for a fence, unless it's from new, never been, or just, just do all fences, come to the town, let us know what you're doing, we'll stamp it, no charge, and you go ahead and do it. Just to say, you know, if we say you can't put a six-foot board fence up, there's a reason. But there really should be no reason why any, any fence would get turned down unless it's made out of the pile of crap and looks like.
No garden layer and all that fence, it's over the height.
Yeah. So, make a motion that anybody that wants to put a fence up will come to town, and we'll give them verbal permission, knowing what kind of fence they are and not charge the building permit.
Have we, have we motioned on the chicken chat? Let's go ahead. Should we do that for the fence?
Well, yeah. So do I have a motion, what Paige have eight chickens, I believe, if was, no roosters? Following the rules, and when, when she gets her pants and stuff, Bill will approve it, and she can put the animals in.
I'll go ahead and make a motion to accept Paige's chicken, little, chicken what? Chicken, I don't know how to call it, chicken permit, permit, chicken permit.
So do I have a second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Now, there's one thing on that that I would like to throw in there, because you talked about it earlier, is, once they get everything done and it's approved, then there will be a signature spot on there for you to sign, saying that you will follow the rules, so I'm going to make sure that that's on the paper.
Okay, now back to the fences, do I have motion that people can come and ask if they can build a fence without getting a permit at no charge, as long as they ask beforehand?
As long as they ask and it's approved.
As long as they ask and it's approved.
I would go ahead and make that motion to, as you worded, Mr. Mayor, is they come to the town hall and get approval, and from that point on, then, yes.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And here is our first fence. Troy, can I get you to grab this for me?
Yeah.
Thank you. It's just right over here on the other side, the corner. Tim, do you want to make a beat of it?
Yes. Just a second. I mean, there you are. And how tall do you plan to make the fence around the perimeter?
How tall you like the fence around, how tall the fence? It'd be six foot.
Okay, is that all the way around it?
No, just in the back.
Just in the back. Okay, so it'll be six foot between you and your neighbor?
Correct.
Yeah. And the rest of it is going to be?
Open.
Oh, you're not, you're not fencing the rest of it, okay, okay.
Yeah, the way I looked at that, I thought it was going to fence that whole.
Yeah, I did too, I did too. So just the back is all?
Just the back, that one, hundred and fifty feet.
I would go ahead, Mr. Mayor, and make a motion to approve Dale. I would go ahead, Mr. Mayor, and make a motion to approve Dale's, uh, application to put a six-foot fence in the back of his house.
Okay, I got a motion for the permit for Dale on a fence, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Thank you, Dale.
Thank you. Let me, I have a question.
Sure.
If I moved in a pre-built building in there, do I have to get a permit?
You know, I, I, I think it's, or I shouldn't say that, but it used to be to move one in, you have to get a permit, and to tear one down, you were supposed to get a permit, but...
Is it permanent though?
Well, you know, what's going on, Dan, let's just.
Yeah, it'd be, uh, no, it'd be like on skids, you know? You can put it in, take it out, whatever. It's really like a, you rent the home.
Yeah.
Travis, good question.
Travis.
But, uh, I do know that it used to be that if there was, if there was not a permanent structure fixed to a foundation, then it was, it was good to go because when you packed up and moved, you could take it with you.
Yeah, they, I've, I've checked with a lot of towns and this has been in the past, they wanna know what you're moving in for the simple fact, they don't want you moving a, a building in that's halfway falling over. Uh, we wanna make sure it's not going to junk up the neighborhood. We wanna make sure that it looks nice, and that's, that's the only teeth we have of stopping somebody from moving a, a piece of junk, you know? But, you know, I don't know about...
I don't know why we couldn't do the same thing we're doing with fences, is, is you come over and we approve what you've got. You know, take pictures of it, whatever, and then bring them over and we approve it and move on. I mean...
That kinda falls right into the building permit thing.
Yeah.
Is that where you know what's coming into town and what's being built and what's being put up and?
But I don't think that we, you know, I, I think we can do the same thing that, as we're doing on fences, is, you know, we're a small town, we're, we're in a, we're in one of the...
That's wrong?
Yeah, I'm good.
Third highest poverty towns in the state, I mean, you know, and people are struggling around here, so they've gotta work with these people and, and include me.
So, I, I feel the same, if, you know, if you're putting a good-looking building in, uh, why get charged extra for, for movement building in the... And of course, we would collect money on it because they charge taxes whether or not we own portable sheds, so...
Well, Mr. Mayor, I would go ahead and entertain a motion to work the prefab buildings on skids uh, for the, the homeowner that's gonna put it in, bring a picture of what you're putting in, get it approved by the council, and pay no permits. Yeah. So I would, I would make a motion to go that route instead of charging for a building permit on a skid, skid building, uh, just the same parameters we got on the fences, we've gotta see, see a picture of it to make sure that...
Sharon, your feelings?
Um, well, then in that case, then the people that have already paid a building permit should get reimbursed.
Well, I, I agree, but, uh, I would, I would say anything that we're doing tonight is retroactive tonight because it, it may take quite a bit to take through the records and, and, uh, give them out, so I would take Tim's motion and put everything passed tonight, we would have to do.
So then for buildings, new buildings and stuff, then are we going to have a building permit and charge twenty-five dollars for it? Or are we just gonna have them come and say, I'd like to build, like to do a building, and give them a permit and not charge? Or what are we gonna do?
Well, yeah.
Right now, let's just be honest, we've got no ordinance that says they need a building permit. So let's be honest with the public, there is nothing in there.
And that's something that we need to just have.
We need to, during our work sessions, we need to discuss that, write one. So it's like I've been telling everybody out there, uh, you know, over the past month and a half, is if you're gonna build something, build it now because you don't need a permit. Yeah. So, yeah, I, I mean, we've, we've got no teeth to put in any building permits, so, um, until we put teeth in it, there's not a lot we can do, Sharon.
Right, but that's the people that have already paid building permits from time that Rod has been mayor, then what are you gonna do about those? Cause they paid twenty-five dollars to get a building permit.
It's like Rod said, he said, you know, this, this would be kind of a retroactive deal, and and, I mean, I wouldn't care if we paid them back to twenty-five, cause there's probably one or two people that would need the twenty-five paid back, period. That I know of, yeah.
I look at it this way, you can't keep going back and forth on this stuff. This one you gotta pay back, then you gotta pay that, set the rules and stick with it. If, if they've been paid beforehand and you're starting from now, that's where it starts. The, I mean, you can't keep adjusting this. You're gonna get in a mess.
And that's the thing, we need to make an ordinance or something to either have a building permit and they pay twenty-five dollars for to get it, or they just can do whatever in town and you just drive around and then you're like, oh, where'd that building come from?
No, they, they can't, they, uh, even though you wouldn't be paying for a permit, you gotta get permits in front of the town, uh, so, so we don't get a bunch of junk moved in, uh... My, my thoughts have always been a little bit confused on building permits because we make people get a building permit, and what do we do with the building permit? We have nobody whatsoever to go around and check and make sure they're, they're putting it up right. Uh, to me, it's, it's, you could say it's a way to generate revenue, but we're playing, we're not generating that.
No, we don't generate not much revenue, you're just being able to say that, oh, cause there, if you get a building permit, everybody knows that, oh, yeah, so-and-so's building something, or so-and-so's gonna put something else there.
But they do need to come before the council and get something in writing that says they have permission to build that, and they've gotta build it in the manner that they say they will. Uh, and it gets, it's just something we need to think about, and probably should, should get something done on it because we have people doing it every day and not, not following the rules.
And that's part of what I'm talking about.
Yeah, so...
Well, thanks, Sharon, what you're talking about is, is I'm in total agreement with what you said. I'm not in total agreement with paying them rent, I, I think we take it like Judy says, take it from tonight forward. But what we've gotta do as a council is we've gotta rewrite that building permit and get it in the book, and, you know, I think, uh, I can sit down and start, it ain't gonna take that long to rewrite it.
Right.
And then all we do is send it, well, we're gonna have three readings on it. So, and then we send it to, to American Publishing, we go ahead and they put it in our book. But right now, there's really not a lot we can do because...
Exactly, cause we don't have one.
Yeah.
But I still think you should charge a little charge for it, that makes them a little more responsible, they're not just gonna bring anything, do anything. If they gotta pay a little fee for it, you live in a big city, you're gonna have to pay for it anyway, even though it's not instructed, but make them, so that they know they have to pay a little bit to do it, and it isn't just gonna be anything, they've still gotta report and give you a little money.
And there's some towns and stuff that have a sign that says building permit required in this town, in this county, and then you have to...
And I, and I think you're right, but until we get that written.
Right, I understand that, but I think if you're gonna set a rule.
Yeah, and then at that point, there would be...
Right.
Yes.
And it'll make them more responsible, I think.
Hi, Thea.
Hello.
How was the kids' deal?
Good.
Good.
We had a bunch of awards.
Right, super duper, super duper, we'll jump right in here, sit up to the table.
So, do we wanna just, just kind of leave it and come back and revisit it, or?
Yeah, it needs to get revisited, but, yeah, we need to do that.
Well, we need to, Thea, what we're talking about is ordinances, building ordinances to bring up to speed. Uh, it's like I told the public, we've got no building ordinance right now. So we've been talking about buildings that are coming into town on skids and things like this. Uh, we went over fences, uh, we're not gonna charge any fees on fences at this point, but they've gotta come in and, and bring it to the town council to get it approved by the council. And we do have ordinances on fences, but on a building permits, as soon as there's no building permits in the book, we was just talking about, uh, uh, going ahead and getting the ordinances written so we can bring them before the council, get three readings on, get them in the book, uh, through American Publishing, and get them codified into our books, so that's where we're at on this topic right now. I think personally is, right now, is, is we table this and, uh, Thea and I, or all three of us, or whoever wants to work on the building ordinance, let's get together and just put it together. It ain't gonna take thirty minutes to put the ordinance together. And then bring it next meeting, bring it for the council, make the first reading on it, and you can get the raw, ball rolling, so... I would make a motion at this point, because we've got no teeth for it, to go ahead and table it uh, and have an ordinance ready, Mr. Mayor, for the next meeting, uh, to pass the first reading on building ordinance.
Okay, we got a motion on the table, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Let the record show that Thea, uh, joined us at seven fifteen. Uh... Okay, we're on, uh, renew the Norton subscriptions for, that must be for the anti-viruses for computers. Have we been paying that before?
Yes. Cause that's how, probably at least five or six years.
Yeah.
And just six or seven.
Now, go ahead, Mr. Mayor, make a motion to renew an Norton subscription.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. What do we have clerked down here under the business? Yes, um, Michelle is going to be on vacation here, uh, pretty quick. And I wanna appoint somebody that will come in and sit in the office for the, the three hours a day, three, three days a week, answer the phone, to take any payments, uh... Just, just so we got, got someone here, and that way, if Michelle's got activities, uh, we can bring somebody in and have them, uh, do what we need to do. Any discussion on that?
How long are you gonna be gone for?
From May twenty-first till, like, May twenty-first till June tenth.
Till June what?
Tenth. I'll be back, so I'll get home before that, but June tenth is that next Tuesday following after I get home.
Well, if, Mr. Mayor, if you're gonna have somebody, uh, collecting payments, they've gotta have that training that, that we went through.
Yes, they do.
I'm looking here. So your name is May twenty-first. So there'll be, there'll be, okay, so let's just say, there'll be one, two, three, one, two, three.
Maybe about six to eight.
Five, six. We would need somebody, and you only want them three days a week, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, that, that should suffice.
So that'd be seven days. Work time, work time. Sharon, are you certified yet? Do you wanna do it?
I'm not certified yet, I just have Jen about to put that thing back on my phone.
Thea, you wanna do it?
I'm gonna do it.
Okay.
Whoever you guys appoint will probably have to come sit with me. I'll leave for three minutes. I got one more week and a half, and then I'll be gone, so if you wanna sit with me next week, and even one or two days a week after that, just so you...
I'll talk to you about afterwards.
So can you do Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesdays?
You don't wanna keep it the same days I'm here, so it doesn't confuse the people?
What day are you, oh, you're Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday? Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday.
So it doesn't confuse people for two weeks, it's this, and then I get back and do something else.
And what we've been paying on that is thirteen dollars an hour, are you good with that?
Um, I can waive that, so there's no conflict, but it'll be on council.
It's not a problem if you want it, or if you wanna waive it, that is up to you.
Yeah, I, I've heard waived, so there's no...
Okay.
Okay, do I have a motion to have Thea come in on days that Michelle is not here and do the necessary work?
So note.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Okay. Sharon, did you have, did we already talk about?
Yeah, we already talked about all that.
Okay.
With an ordinance, this would be, next time I should wanna go back up to Thea, I've got some chickens here.
Uh, do you wanna do a quick rundown on your checking permit?
Yes, um, I am basically just trying to renew the one I had before, but also, um, increase the number that I would be allowed. I don't want twenty-five chickens, however, um, I'm, am going to increase my flock and grow it a little bit this year. Um, so that's pretty much the, the gist of that permit, is I would like to just renew the one I had previously and then, um, apply for a, an expansion on how many I have.
Yeah, we, in our ordinance, uh, what did it say, the...
Says it's got rules by the governing body, and you guys have just said that it was thirteen, you know? And then every year, they have to come in and apply for to have the chickens still. And talks about what they have to do for the chickens.
Sharon, you looking at one of their...
Yeah, um, when did this thirteen number pop up?
They're expanding the ordinances for years.
And it's in the ordinance?
Yeah, this is, it says it's for the governing body, this, these are all codified. It says, "All persons who are issued a permit for chickens must comply with the following restrictions, the maximum of chickens is determined by the governing body."
So where does this thirteen come from?
In the previous, people that applied for them, we agreed to try to keep that number thirteen or lower.
We didn't agree. Thirteen was brought up in the previous council for the number.
Okay.
Because one of them was...
The governing body that would make it.
Yeah.
Well, um, my permit does say twenty-five, but it's really just a twenty-five total, plus, so it'd be the, um, four that I have now, then just the twenty-one. So, um, I mean, it's not set in stone, and I'm not planning to get that many, but it's one of those, you know, number.
I would really, really like to see us keep the number at thirteen, uh...
Um, is there any way we can get these, um, decision, like these numbers put somewhere and then posted so that everybody can see them? Cause I did not know that there was a number at any point put on there that... so that everybody can see them? Because I did not know that there was a number at any point put on there that was...
Yeah. And then we'll, we'll, we'll put that on a permit when people apply for them. And then there's a set of rules and regulations that you've got to follow, and we'll have them, rules and regulations. When you apply for your permit, you will sign it and agree to follow the rules. And then, once you have followed them, we'll come in and we'll... And I don't know who it'll be, but we'll get somebody to make sure that the pins are built to specifications and, uh, go from there.
So anyhow...
Come in every year and...
Right, right. And Thea, you're, you're pretty good at reading the ordinances. You know about all the stipulations that's in there and everything, so we don't need to go through that tonight, but I would go ahead and make a motion that Thea can have up to thirteen chickens and not bring them in until everything is approved according to the ordinances.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it as long as it's the thirteen.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay, now we're on... We're on right here, uh, hearing.
No ordinances.
Ordinances.
What was that one about?
The one that came out in...
Oh.
Yeah.
Okay, ordinances.
All right, it's been brought to my attention that an individual has brought animals into the town of Anderson. More animals than what was talked about to, this person could have. So, what we've got to do on this is, we need to write a letter, and the animals are sheep, so you all know. We need to write a letter stating that they didn't come before the city council to discuss this. And if we're going to put teeth in these ordinances, we've got to start doing it. On that letter, we need to state, because I know I'm going to vote to go with what we had when it started, but what we need to state on that is that those animals must be removed because I never had permission within, uh, four days, or five days, or whatever. But it's just wrong to go ahead and do what this person done without coming to the council and talking about it first. And I will vote to remove them. Once they're removed, and, and if she, if she doesn't remove them, we've got somewhere that says they will be removed, and they will be taken to au- they will be taken to the auction yard. At that point, uh, the owner... They will be sold at auction. And whatever money that was incurred to transport, to pick them up, to sell them, to do whatever, whatever those animals sell for, if there's any money left, then that will go back to the person that owns the animals. But we can't just allow people to continue to do things without coming to the council prior to them doing it. And I've already got complaints on what happened, so I'm not bringing any names up, but we are going to, uh, we need to get a letter to this person and demand that those are gone within a certain period of time. And, you know, when it started, it was, uh, two sheep, and then this person brought in three sheep, said she's going to butcher one. And that didn't happen, and now there's more sheep. So, I would ask the council, and I want to open it up for discussion, because I don't know if anybody else knows about this on the council or not, so I'd like to see what everybody else thinks needs to be done, but something needs to be done. Not out of anger or anything else, or against anybody, I'm not against anybody, but we all got rules that we've got to follow.
Right, here in the ordinances, it is unlawful for any person to keep or maintain any livestock within any area of the town without written approval from the town council. That includes cattle, horses, mules, asses, swine, sheep, apacas, llamas, bison, goats, ducks, geese, turkeys, or poultry of any description. Chickens should be allowed with the permit and all the rules and regulations followed.
No, I agree, um, because, I mean, we had that, that's what the permits are for. So, I think we attach a copy of, um, the permit that they were issued, and then send that letter, and give them time to rectify it, and if they don't, then we do what we need to do.
Josh?
That's Daryl's official job title, so...
Let me call Daryl and clarify that.
He's in training right now for it.
So, uh... Let's put that in a motion, but...
I can go ahead and make the motion that we, we attach, that, that we, we write a draft letter to this person. I would say give her, uh, five days to remove the sheep. Do you think that's fair?
I think that's fair.
Uh, if they're not removed in five days, then they will be removed and sold at auction. So, I would make a motion to go ahead and draft that letter and get it out as soon as possible. And, uh, and again, I'm not trying to be a, uh, a no-good rotten son of God, it's just the way it is. I mean, and this is right where nobody else wants them, so it's, it's going to be a problem if we don't deal with this. So, I would make a motion, go ahead and draft the letter and get it out as soon as possible.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Okay, hearing, and, uh... I've been talking with the attorney, and I've been talking with different towns. With, with Julie not being here and hasn't been here. She's not a resident of Madison at the current time. And if you're not a resident, you can't hold a position or vote in any way on town, business. So, what I was told by the attorney is that we set up a hearing, a date, notify the person, and have them come in before the council. They would have to have proof that they are a resident and that they are continuing to be a resident. And if not, if, if she don't come and, uh...
Produce proof.
Then, then we've, we've got to send her a letter stating that seeing she's not a resident, we've got to move and put somebody in town on that is a resident. And I feel bad for Julie, but it, it takes five people up here to, to run this town properly. And we're not getting justice when, when she can't show up. So, I just wanted to bring it up to the council and see what you guys want to do.
Mr. Mayor, it's not any of that. The law is the law. I mean, if you're not a resident of the town and you can't serve in a, in a public office, uh, uh, position, so it's nothing against Julie, it's just we've got to move on as a council. And, you know, for her to show proof of, of citizenship, we would need, uh, you know, a, a electric bill, or a gas bill, something in her name showing that she is a resident and proving that she is living in the town. So, she would come before the council, produce what needs to be produced. And if she cannot produce that, then we need to fill that position. And that's just, I mean, that's another state law. And, so, you know, I would go ahead and, and ask the council to, uh, for any comments or any other ideas or anything, but, you know, again, we, the law is the law, so I would open it for discussion for the rest of the council, too.
I think we need to follow the law about it.
Yeah, as you guys know, that's kind of what I've been harping on, so... Shouldn't be any question about me.
So, I would go ahead and make a motion to set a date for a hearing. We probably ought to give her seven days to get her stuff in order and everything, wouldn't you think? So, set a hearing for sometime next week.
Is that a good time to send the letter to her, or what are you doing?
Yeah, could we do it the week after, just to make sure that the mail gets where it needs to go?
That's a good idea, because it takes forever.
Mr. Mayor, so, I was talking to Julie, actually, about her dog, but I just want to say, I know she has a lot of doctor appointments and therapy appointments, and so, you might, maybe just somebody ask her before you set the, the date, so... You guys all know how that works.
Well, yeah, and maybe...
She has lots of appointments.
Maybe it should be, we ask what her intentions are, and the, you know, what the law states, and send her a letter, and if her intentions are to resign, then we don't need to do this.
Or if her intentions are that she's going to be a resident alone, or a resident of Madison?
Yeah.
Why don't, why don't you just reach out to her, Mr. Mayor, and say what you just said, and ask her what her intentions are before we send the letter? What do you guys think?
I think that would be a good first step.
Okay, I will cry. I think that's got her home number. Does anybody know if she's using her cell phone?
Yes, she is.
Well, Janet said she's talked to her. She would probably know how to get ahold of her.
We got her.
Okay, uh... We, we've got that, and the, the hearing. There is one other thing. And this, I want to move the mayor's comments down here for me to make a, a comment. I've had a couple of concerns with people putting in water and sewer without permission. I, I talked to the person months ago and thought we had come up with an agreement. The, the, the state people, any time that you let, you can't let a homeowner run their line, water line or sewer line, or change it without permission of the town, because it can cause cross-contamination. It can, uh, cause problems to the system. So, so we've got one there that we need rectified, and I, I don't quite know what to do with it.
What do the ordinance say? Does it need water?
Well, it's, uh, there's, if, if mentions it partly in the utilities, but this is more a state...
State law. Well, if it's state, then definitely has something. So, I would say a letter with citing that state law or state ordinance.
Any other comments?
Well, I think what we need to do is look into it thoroughly. And, and, uh, you know, if we're gonna, well, we're not going to have a hearing if, if, it depends if we're going to have another meeting or not, but uh, I would say, Mr. Mayor, that we look into that thoroughly before we do anything on that.
Because you can get fined instead of DEQ also. Because then if anything happens to the town water or anything, the town is liable, and it's at their expense, at the town's expense, to get it fixed if anything goes wrong.
Well, you know, anytime that's done, it's, uh, and, and again, that's why I say we need to look at it a little more thoroughly, is because, uh, you know, anytime you're dealing and you're messing with the city system, it needs to be done by a plumber, a certified plumber. You know, we can't just go in there and, I mean, it's like Rob said, cross-contamination. What you mean by that is, let's say, for example, this person put this line in, didn't get one glued right, and all of a sudden, uh, that's leaking that pollutant into the groundwater, and all of a sudden, we have a, a, a break in our main, and that groundwater gets in that main and can cross-contaminates it, and then we've got some real major issues, so... I would suggest, uh, Mr. Mayor, that, that we look at that thoroughly before we get into that.
Yeah, I just, I wanted to bring it up. So... It shows that I did bring it up. I don't, you know, I don't want to be accused of, of not doing my job. So, I would, I would suggest we look into it. And I can go a little bit further. I hate to go ask DEQ or people like that, because then it's possible. They, we don't want to end here looking at everything, because then they may see a hundred thousand different things, but but I guess if they do, they do.
If they do, then it needed to be addressed and fixed anyway.
Judy?
But weren't we looking in the ordinances that it states in there that you can't run two homes off of it, or you've got to get somebody in there to do it right, to cut into a sewer, or to run the water?
Yeah, I knew...
It's like two homes on one place.
There's stuff about that. Thought I had it in mind.
That's why I say we, we, we just take, well, we don't have to take anything, let's, let's just look into that thoroughly before.
Look into it, and we can discuss it, and I can go ahead and do some more questioning. And see what, what other towns do, and see where, where we need to go. So, let's, let's table that until either the next special meeting or the next regular meeting.
Yeah, let's not table it too terribly long.
Yeah.
I do think that if it's, uh, if it does the state, definitely should be fairly easy to find, and that'd be the way to go, and it would be still pull more water than from, um, art ordinances.
Well, yeah, and when you go and get your water license, that's, that's one thing that the DEQ really parts on, that you know, you've, you've, you've got to know the rules and regulations, and you better follow them, because they didn't put it in there just to make people happy. So, let me look into it and see what we got.
While we're, while we're kind of on that subject, Ron, uh, did you talk to Chris this weekend?
No, I didn't. I, uh, I was going to call him tonight, but I remembered they had some stuff to do. I figured maybe I'd get ahold of him tomorrow.
Yeah, Thea, what, what the mayor wanted to do, I thought maybe he'd get ahold of him, but if Chris wants to spray this, this summer, we would love him to do it, so ask him and have him call Ron.
Okay, do we... Do we have room, or do we have need for executive session?
Yes, I wanted to call on the executive session personnel.
Okay. Then we will, uh...
Shouldn't take too long.
I'll go ahead and, and, uh, make a motion to retire to executive session, okay?
Okay. Yes, yes, one.
Give me a second. Second.
Oh, I said, sorry.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And it's seven forty, seven forty-five. executives. Uh, do we need a motion to call meeting back to order, Mr. Mayor? Do I have the motion to call the meeting back to order?
I made a motion to call meeting back to order, make a decision.
Do I have a second?
I have a second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, as I said, personnel issue, uh, that's, that's all we had, next thing on the agenda.
Right, let me finish that if I may.
Yeah, what is?
Uh, basically, the personnel was about, uh, Mr. Applegar, um, and it was agreed that he needs to go ahead, and we will put a contract together for him, he'll sign it, we'll put it in a personnel file. All of, all of us have got personnel files other than Howard, so we need to get a personnel file on Howard, so, uh, uh, I would go ahead, Mr. Mayor, and make a motion to, uh, ask Mr. Applegar to, to come in when we have a contract ready for him to sign it, and then put it in his, uh, personnel file.
Okay, do I have a motion to?
Second. I just made a motion.
Did you? Do I have a second?
I have a second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Council comments?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, if we may, can we move back to public comments, because we missed that?
No. Is there, I'm sorry, is there any public comments?
So has the town thought about, you know, with the construction, they come down and get water down at the boat ramp, and they're just tearing that up because of the mud and that, so have we ever, has the town ever thought about having a deal with them, that they, when they're done, they bring in gravel?
We've, we've, we've had them do that before.
Yeah.
And we've had them smooth it out.
Because they're gonna be chipping out here soon.
Yeah.
And so I'm sure they'll get water, you know, which is fine, but they're just tearing it up so bad down there, that people are trying to get in their boats, who looks like.
Yeah, I think that's a good.
So maybe, you know, talk to them, and say, hey, you know, here's a deal, because obviously, we don't own the water, but you own the rain out, you know?
Right, right.
And they're just tearing it up, no, I mean, not maliciously, but, I mean, just bring in some gravel after you're done.
And it used to be, nobody ever had a problem with maintaining and cleaning up after themselves, so.
Right.
And I'm sure McGar from Old Lea would probably.
And do you have a sign that you can put on that gate of please close the gate when you get in your boat?
I used to have one, and then someone took it, but I, I can put another one up there. Yeah, but I was just thinking, you know.
But you also need to put it's a public access too. On your closed gate, because people wouldn't go down there, because you had it shut up.
There's lots of people that still go through there and don't close the gate, but I can do that too.
Anyway, I'm just saying, they wouldn't, they would go on by because it was shut.
Right.
No, that's a good idea, I like, uh, and I will get ahold of McGar, they've been pumping out our fire hydrants here for the last week or so, and we're making some pretty good money on them, so I hope that river stays muddy.
Right.
God give us a lot of rain in Vermont.
And with the work orders, about how long does it take when you put in a work order? Because we put one in for that meter post.
We'll get to it next week.
Howard, do you want to do it first?
Oh, good.
Oh, cool.
Well, no, because he's got a mole, he's way behind us, so we'll do it.
I gave him a work order, he said tomorrow.
Just because we're, we're working.
Yeah, it won't take us fifteen minutes.
Okay.
We'll do that, thanks, lady, that is a good idea.
Yeah.
Great idea.
Right, Mr. Mayor.
Sorry, I can't hold my head up.
I was just curious how dog tags, people get in dog tags, or is that still, that's still happening?
I don't think I've had anyone come in since the.
We didn't get a list of all the people that's got dogs, and we need to send them back.
Well, some of those dog tags was people that came to the campground, because when Roddy started on it, he made anybody that was renting the cabins, if they were there for thirty days, they had to come and get a dog tag, so that that way we had proof that they had rabies.
I have names on files, though, so I'll kind of know who's in town.
Right, because some of them have already moved on.
Well, I was just thinking, Josh wants to know, you know, he wants everybody to have dog tags, so they'll know who it is, so you need to, you need to keep up on it.
Exactly. And I have an Excel sheet where, when everybody comes and gets in, I write down their tag number, I have in filled out a sheet that says, like, uh, kind of like a description of your dog, what color, old, how old, what kind of dog, like breed.
You got a whole record, you can touch.
I have to go house to house, unless everybody brought their dogs, which is fine, I can do that, too.
Okay.
Say anything with your phone.
Any other, any other comments, uh, public? How about council comments?
I would like to make a comment, that I think that this council is doing a great job of getting things together, and I think we're all working together real well, and I like that, and I think we're gonna have a couple of good years ahead, I just get a lot of things done, guys.
Okay.
I have one just to the general public, and mostly the people online, uh, I do want to make a note that, uh, it's been brought to my attention that, um, people are insinuating that I am doing things so that I can get away with things, or that I can do things illegally, or that I am trying to complain and hold up this council with my pointing out things that we are doing incorrectly, and, uh, I just want to say that if there is any concerns or problems that anybody has directly, I do welcome people to come to me, and if you have criticism, I take that too, uh, I would prefer it come to me instead of being spread around through rumors, um, you can email me, I have a town email, it's thea.sanders@mandersonwheoming.us, that's T-H-E-A dot S-A-U-N-D-E-R-S at W-Y-O-M-I-N-G, uh, oh, Madison, the name, Madison, and then Wyoming, dot U-S. Um, and honestly, I, I really do would prefer to have a discussion rather than to hear that I'm being accused of doing illegal activities, because that's obviously not my goal, that's the biggest thing that I do up here is, is complain about things that we're not doing correctly, and I don't do that to point fingers, I mean, you know, it's fine, that's how it's been done, but it, it's not right, so we should work on being better, we shouldn't be okay with being the way we have been, we should want to be better, and to do that, we have to find our flaws. So I, I really do genuinely and sincerely wish that if anybody has any problems, you don't have to be nice to me, I don't mind, you can have harsh words for me, I am a big girl and I can take it, but I would prefer that we handle it like adults, instead of spreading rumors and talking ill about people, and that goes very beyond council, if you have a problem with council, come to the meetings, people on the internet, come to the meetings, and bring it to us, that's what we're here for, and if it's gonna cause, if you feel like it's gonna cause an argument, maybe work on it before you get here, and let's have good energy, good worded, don't come in here making crazy accusations, but that's what we want, we want to be better, and the only way that we can be better is if people in town and ourselves push for that. If you find something we're doing wrong, tell us, if I'm doing wrong, tell me, show me where I'm being wrong, not just with, because we have been, but with proof of, that's what we need, and so that's all I'm asking, if that, if there's any issues with me, please bring it to me, because I'm an adult, everybody here is an adult, and that's how we should be handling things.
Thank you.
I hope there's no more comments, if there is, I'll start there, and if there are.
Gladly.
So, is there any more comments? Thank you, everybody, for coming, uh, we're slowly getting things together, uh, let's keep working together and talking, and let's get things done, thank you.
Remember, if anybody needs anything done on the tractor, any of that, get harder than I can, because we're gonna blow them down.
Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
I have a second.
All those in favor?